Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. With your right hand over your heart, ready begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No amendments, Mr. President.
All right. Do we have any public comments? This is the time for members of the public to comment on any matters, not before the Board. Do we have any speaker slips? No? Okay. All right. All right, we have consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been second and, I'm sorry, it's been moved and second. I did have one, just one question, if I might, and I think I see Ms. Roff just walked in, and I just had one question on the library activity report. And every time I read the library activity report, I just want to know whether or not there were any material changes from the past months to any category in that report. And I noticed that on this report, there was one, something that was rather atypical, and that is that in the August 17 column, in terms of new items added, there were approximately 800 new items added from the prior month, and I just was curious as to what that might be.
Without looking at the statistical report, I'm not quite sure. But we're purchasing items all the time. We purchase them every week, every day, pretty much. There are new materials that are coming into the library collections.
Okay, we must have acquired something, something new. A lot.
Is that specific?
No, I just, we went from the, went from the new items added, went from about 1,700 in mid-July to almost 2,600 in mid-August.
Oh, okay, I understand. That's because at the end of the fiscal year, we stopped purchasing largely in June because we don't want to go over budget at the end of the fiscal year.
Ah, okay.
And so, we build the carts that are ready for the rollover that starts on July the first. And so, everything that's been held in that cart for about 30 days, all comes in immediately after the beginning of the fiscal year, and that would account for an increase.
Okay, that answers my question. It sounds, sure, it sounds like a fiscal year exercise, more than anything else.
Yes.
Good, okay. All right, thank you for indulging me. We've had a motion and a second. Please vote.
That carries unanimously with Mr. Morgan absent.
Okay, very well. Let's see, we have any departmental items? I think, Ms. Roff, would you like to be, come back up and be heard on anything? Please. Actually, I could have waited to ask my, ask my question until now, but anyway, please come back up.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak just for a moment to introduce two wonderful additions to the library staff team. I know some of you have already had the opportunity to meet our new, two new supervisors. I'll just give them just a little short time to introduce themselves, but first of all, I'd like to introduce Ayana Gaines, who is our new youth services supervisor, and also Bob Wilson, Robert Wilson, who is our new adult services supervisor. And if you'll indulge me just for a moment, I'm just going to allow them to speak at the mic.
Pull it down.
You can bring it down.
Oh, fabulous. I'm five foot. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm quite happy to be a part of the new team at Camrio Public Library. It's such a great, dynamic library. I come to it from Ventura College, so I come from an academic background. I have a fabulous team with the youth services team. I'm really excited to get started at working on some projects. One of the things I'm really excited to be able to work on is collaborating with the new high school right across the way, and with the other schools in the area as well. I think we can do some great projects together. I'm really excited about the idea of breaking out of our silos, you know, our little, you know, tunnels of vision that we often work with, and working to collaborate with the public schools or the other schools in the area as well. We just had a tour of a school in the library today, and it was great to see their excitement. And it's an excitement that I would love to see on the faces of high school students as well, as just, as well as first graders. So, that's something I look forward to nurturing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, everyone, I'm Robert Wilson. I come from Queens, New York. I've been in the area now, I guess, for almost three, veteran of three weeks. Nice to meet you and to be here. The other night, we had the pleasure going to the Pleasant Valley Parks and Recreation meeting, and we got to listen to the community and, and hear the people's concerns and what it is that they're looking for. And as I joined the team of adult service librarians, you know, we're listening to what the seniors ask for and their computer needs and the language needs of the adults, and we have ideas, you know, that we're, we're going to try and bring forward. And, you know, in listening to, to the people speak, the seniors, you know, talk about computer literacy, and that's hard, you know, even for adults. I often go to the kids to learn about that stuff myself sometimes. But, you know, we're going to try and make more programs available to them and computers available to them, and if we have to reach out to the people who can't get to us to visit the homes for different programs, we'll do that as well. So, I thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and thanks so much for having us.
Welcome to both of you.
Yes, welcome.
We're, Ms. Gaines and Mr. Wilson, we're delighted that you're here. Thank you for being part of our team, and we welcome you. And the only thing I would say to Ms. Gaines is that my wife brought her kindergarteners from Dos Caminos for 14 years, so I wanted to advocate on behalf of kindergarteners, as well as the first graders. Even, it was the highlight of their month when they got to go over to the library.
I have one more thing that I'd like to add. In addition to this, this amazing team that's going to be innovating us into the future, just wanted to thank the city for the new installation of a scanner. It's been already, just been up this week, so people can come in with their documents now and download things onto a USB drive that's either checked out or they can purchase. And then, they can use their own email addresses as fax machines, basically. So, this is a huge change and a wonderful innovation that we've been able to move forward, thanks to Administrative Services. Thank you so much for permitting us to do that. And the other really exciting news was that we now have exterior benches and tables out at the back of the library towards the lawn area, which is deeply exciting. We've even got a round table now that has a wheelchair accessible space, so that one of the benches is missing from a round table, so that we can have disabilities, people with disabilities, working alongside other people who are on homework projects or just relaxing outside the library, as well as inside the library. So, thank you so much for facilitating those wonderful innovations, and we're really excited to be moving forward with this new team. Thanks so, thanks so much for your time.
All good news, thank you very much.
Chair, could I make a comment?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
First of all, I also want to welcome you, and I think all of us feel the same way, that you're working in the best building in town, so it's, it's our happiest place in Camrio, so, welcome to that. I have a question on your process, and we're talking about the scanner, and then people could bring their own documents, scan them, and then email them to, to themselves. You are going to have a talk with them, so they understand they shouldn't be emailing things with social security numbers and so forth like that, right?
Absolutely. It's senior safety, or scamming in general, is something that the staff are really aware of, and we certainly are, take every opportunity to make that clear. We're also hoping to expand our, our computer drop-in workshops for people who are less computer savvy, so that we'll be able to give that instruction in a classroom setting in the tech lab, as well as on a one-on-one basis. So, I know it's something that's near and dear to your heart, and it's certainly near and dear to ours also.
Yeah, it's important. It's too easy to forget about it and just, oh, push a button and it's gone, but it could be gone to somewhere you don't want it to go.
Right, absolutely.
I'm glad that you raised that question, is, and just to, it's a real good question, just as part of it, is that part of an, an overall appropriate use policy that you provide to folks before they utilize that kind of service, or is it, as you described?
Not as a, not as a general rule.
Not as a general, okay.
It's on an as-needed basis.
Okay, all right.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to remind people as they, they use it, because as they say, it's so easy to forget.
Absolutely. Thank you.
A lot of times, they're putting it on a disk.
But she said they were using their, their personal email as a fax machine. Do you email it to yourself, or, you know, it's?
Or to put it on a little drive.
USB drive.
Take it home, that's fine with that, but once you hit that internet, goodness only knows.
Yes. Thank you for the reminder, it's absolutely true. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, moving on to any items from legal counsel? And any other items from staff? Comments from the trustees? Well, with that, then, we will adjourn this meeting at 5:11 PM.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular Camrio Sanitary District meeting for October 11th to order, please. Let the record reflect that all members, less one, are present. Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Public comments for the San District? Okay, we'll move down to item three, it's a consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I do have one question, if I might, Mr. Chair. With respect to the professional services agreement for engineering design services with DUDAC, and this project for renewable energy project implementation, in particular the blowers, is a outstanding project. I'm really happy to see this project, and I've had a number of sanitary district clients implement this type of practice in the past. What I'm curious about is, the design and construction phase services altogether are estimated, these are financial questions, principally about 115,000. And at this point, what I wanted to ask is, is the capital cost estimate that's provided on big page B-12, the capital cost estimate at a gross project cost is about 1.44 million?
No, so, that gross total is the total of all four recommended measures. So, if, on the next page, on big B-13, it breaks it down per project. So, if you look all the way over to the right, the third column from the right is gross project costs. And so, each, each of the recommendations, the four different items that were recommended for efficiency, you know, energy efficiency improvements are listed. The second one down, blower optimization, the gross project cost is just a little over, little over half a million, 514,500.
Okay.
That's total gross, and then less the little over 100,000 now for the design and construction phase. And I will point in there, there are some specialty services provided there where they're going to be doing some vibration analysis prior to final design. So, it's a little bit higher percentage-wise than what you would typically see for design of a project.
Yes.
Because it's some pretty specific engineering, and again, that vibration analysis that we'll be going through. So, the, it's a little bit higher on the percentage side of the total project cost for design. And then, roughly, we're estimating, the bulk of it is variable frequency drives, is what's going to be installed to optimize the efficiencies, and in the ballpark of 250,000 for capital cost for the equipment.
Okay, yeah, and you anticipated my, my next question, which was relative to the design cost amount, so, but the gross project cost was for all of the EEMs?
That's correct. That 1.4 million, you'll see that at the bottom of that column as a total of 1.439 million.
Okay, and of course, I shouldn't, for those folks who don't have the staff report in front of them, in front of them, I should mention that, you know, that we will re, we will regain, we will, all this will be ultimately paid back in the form of lower electricity costs.
That's correct.
And energies, and energy savings. So, it's a win-win from an environmental and a financial standpoint.
That's correct.
So, I didn't want to neglect to add that. Okay, that concludes my, my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please vote. That passes 401 with one absence. Okay, departmental, any comments from the staff tonight? Anybody?
No, no comments.
Any comments from the board members? Anything tonight? No? Okay, so with that, we will recess to a study session with the water and sewer rate. So, with that, we're in recess.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio Successor Agency to order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of Mr. Morgan. Do we have any amendments to this short agenda?
No amendments, Mayor.
Thank you. Next would be time for a public comment. I do not have any speaker sheets. Would anyone in the audience like to address the Camrio Successor Agency? And this is the agency that's, I'm dealing with the end of our redevelopment agency. Hey, seeing no one come forward, we will move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself from item 3B under disbursements. And let me just note for the record that a payee, Chase, is a client of Music Peeler and Garrett, which is now my former law firm. As of September 30, 2017, I withdrew from Music Peeler and Garrett and semi-retired to a solo law practice, but I still need to recuse myself from this matter, as I understand it under FPPC rules.
And just, you might, for how long does that go on, since you've left? Just for, so people?
Well, generally speaking, let me give you my lawyer's answer, and depending upon the circumstances, it's a 12-month rule, but I am awaiting some clarification from the FPPC on that.
So, if the public sees you continue to do it, it's because it's a certain period of time after you leave that you still have to recuse yourself?
Right, which I'm required by law to do. Thank you.
Sounds good. And congratulations on your semi-retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, please vote. And that does pass for a yes, with Mr. Morgan absent, and the notation that Mr. Trimbley abstained from item B. Do we have any comments from staff? Comments from board members? Okay, if not, we are adjourned. And I'm now going to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council to order, and I just want to note, I noticed there, we have Boy Scouts in the audience, and you probably wondered why we've gone through so many meetings. And the city council oversees a number of agencies or of our commissions, and you've seen us work through a couple of those, and we're now on to our city council agenda. If you have questions, don't hesitate to fill out a speaker sheet, and we're glad you're here. And it's always a pleasure when the Boy Scouts come to visit us, and we know you're working on your community service badge and your government badge, and so, we're here to answer questions, and we're here to serve you. So, with that, we move on to roll call. Oh, I mentioned that, that was in the last one, that all council members are present, with the exception of Mr. Morgan. Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mayor.
Okay, anything from council? Okay, then we move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from Mr. Trimbley?
I do again. If I could please be recused from item B under disbursements, because one or more of the payees are clients of Music Peeler and Garrett, my former law firm.
Perfect, okay. Any other discussion on consent items? If not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously with Mr. Morgan absent and Mr. Trimbley abstaining on item B. And you actually picked a very good night, in some ways, because we have a very short calendar. So, you're going to get to say you sat through the whole meeting, and, but you get to leave early. So, with that, we have no other items on the, the agenda for this evening, other than some close items, session items, but I'd like to go to new business at this point in time, if I could, before we get to our closed session items. So, with that, I'll start with the city manager.
No items, Madam Mayor.
City manager, Mr., any staff? We've got lots of time tonight, it's your chance. City attorney.
Well, you shouldn't have told me we have lots of time, but, um...
Oh, that doesn't apply to you.
I didn't think so, so, no, I have no items.
Thank you. Okay, items from the city council, let's start with Mr. Trimbley this evening.
Now that I know we have lots of time, no, 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 I'm kidding. I wanted to just indicate, as far as meetings, since the last, our last city council meeting, we had a meeting on Monday, October 9. Madam Mayor and myself, as the liaison committee with the Camrose Water District Representatives. And yesterday, I had both the, I attended both a, an ad hoc committee meeting for EDC-VC, and then the Economic Development Workshop, last night at the Camrio Library, and I was very pleased to see that process start, and I'm very grateful to the folks who attended and provided their views. And I'm confident that at least a few of those folks are also going to be participating in the three-meeting workshop series as we go forward. I thought their comments were, were well-taken, and I appreciate their being there. A general comment on the tragedy unfolding in Sonoma and Napa Counties, and since I'm from that area originally, it really hits home in terms of the people who are affected. I've had word come back to me that, that some of the damage, I mean, it was, it's really incredibly tragic, but some of the fire danger may be caused by a number of dead trees within subdivisions that really caught fire. And I know there's a, I mean, that, I know that there are a lot of causes for something like this to occur, and I realize that it was a real conflagration, and, and very hard to, to prevent. But it made me wonder whether or not the city, as a city, we have a good idea of those trees, particularly on public streets or on sidewalks, that may be dead at this point, in terms of whether or not they may represent a, a fire danger. So, I'm just wondering aloud, and I wanted to ask that question, because I think we also have a number of property owners within the city who may have dead trees on their properties, and my wish is that, to the extent that they have those dead trees, they are removed from a fire safety standpoint. But my question to city staff is, with respect to streets, I know, for example, well, I have another issue relative to pine trees, but we'll get to that one in a minute.
Yes, most definitely. Public Works Department maintains a GIS layer of inventory of, of street trees within city right-of-way, and of course, over the, even before my time here, through the extensive drought period, we were experiencing a pretty significant loss of trees. So, a very active awareness out there to any time a, a tree looks like it's suffering, or, you know, take a close look at it. We actually have a certified arborist on staff who can make the determination, you know, whether or not a tree is, is dying or dead and needs to come out very quickly. So, in the past and currently, we, we continue to do that and are removing trees, unfortunately, you know, we, we never like to unless it's a, a safety health hazard, for sure. So, we're continually doing that, even now, even through the wind, we did have several trees go down, several leaning, obviously, their health is in jeopardy and they'll be removed. We keep track of all of that with a replacement program in place to go forward with the replacement. Now that we, you know, are out of the heaviest part of the drought, we do have the ability, you know, to be able to irrigate enough to establish newly planted trees, so we're moving forward with that also.
And, Madam Mayor, if I can, just then, okay, so that's with respect to public streets and so on. If city staff becomes aware that there are dead trees on private property, what actions, if any, does the city currently take in terms of a notification to the property owner advising them that this has come to, to their attention, to the city's attention, and requesting that they consider taking some affirmative action?
So, that would typically be handled as a property nuisance issue, with property maintenance being in a deficient state, and code compliance handles that through our proactive code compliance inspections, or on a complaint basis also.
Is that a, is that a, I'm not quite sure how to articulate this, is that a violation under code enforcement?
If there's a dead tree on a property, it could be a property maintenance issue.
I'm only bringing up this issue, members of the council, just because it, what's going on up in Sonoma and, and Napa really has hit home to me, and, and it made me think about this particular issue, and so, I wanted to bring it to, to folks' attention. So, I did...
That's a good point.
All right, thank you. That's it for me.
That's it for you, thank you. I'll, Mr. Morgan, we're on informational items, so I'll come back to you as you get organized there. Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, let's see, I did attend one meeting via SD, and since we've had a lot of winds, and there's a lot of pine needles and stuff all around, especially on Ponderosa Drive, I know it's all over the city, out in Mission Oaks as well, are we actively trying to clean those up as best we can?
Yes, yeah, if you haven't seen the crews out there, they are out there, concentrated on arterial roads to begin with. We typically have one crew out doing landscape tree trimming on a regular basis. We've actually increased that to two crews, put some staff that typically do other things on that effort also, along with our landscape maintenance contractor. So, we're out there, you know, cleaning that up as quickly as possible. It'll still take a few more days to get all the arterials cleaned up.
Okay. And I have one thing, and I'm not meaning to pick on anybody, but has anybody been over to our post office and looked how horrible it looks over there? The trees are dying, it's not being watered. I know it's federal, I know it's a different one, but could we maybe, I went over there to use their 24-hour service, and one of the machines was not operational, and I get the maintenance of it, but it does not, in my opinion, it does not look...
So, I haven't noticed the 24-hour machine, but we have noticed the landscaping is not looking very good, and we're trying to address that.
I'd appreciate it if you would. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but if you could, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, let's see here, and as far as, back up a little, Mr. Trimbley's saying, as far as our code, when we go around the neighbors, neighborhoods here, are we looking for perhaps some trees that might not be as healthy as they should be, things of that nature as well? Because I've noticed, as I walk around the city, that ever since the drought, and of course, you know, we asked a lot of our residents not to really cut back on our watering, I understand all that, but there's some houses out there that are starting to look like, you know, they're, they're in a drought, and I get the reasons for it, but are we trying to be as proactive as possible with...
Yes, absolutely. I think our code compliance efforts have kind of been ramped up the past couple of years, so we tend to be more proactive than we may have done in the past anyhow, albeit the drought conditions. We were kind of ignoring brown lawns, but we're past that now, so if we see a property that we feel is, has inadequate property maintenance, whether it's a dead tree, a dead shrub, or weeds in the lawn, or lawn area, we're addressing that. And if you all ever notice it, please let us know, and we'll investigate that.
All right, I appreciate that. That's all I have to say.
Mrs. Craven?
I was remiss last meeting. I meant to say that I thought that the, the redo of the culverts in the streets up on Glenbrook and Las Poses turned out very good, and I love the fact that you no longer go choom as you're going westbound on Las Poses in front of that storm drain. I also attended two meetings, both on October 3, an early morning meeting of RDP-21, where we learned about the NAV SOC, it's called Naval Satellite Operation Command, and that night, I had a Camrio Ranch Foundation Board meeting. And that's it.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, since I've been late, one of those things was a tree. I had one of my trees, my birch tree, went over today, and it, luckily, it didn't break a wall, but it crashed over like that, and I had to clean it off the street. That's where I was last minute here, dragging it around my front yard, so I can, you know, saw it up tomorrow. But it did one thing for me, I was going to take that tree out anyway. And so, birch trees die easy, and so, this one was dead. And it just happened that that wind really caused it to do its thing. So, I know what you're talking about, we're talking about trees. It did me one favor, but it made me have to work on it, too, to get it out of the street. Sorry I'm late, but that's, I want to make sure we're clean, and it's off the sidewalk and all that stuff. I've been gone for two weeks, been gone for 12 days, and, and what an experience. Went on a ship cruise to Italy and Spain, and I was there during the demonstrations with 100,000 people, with flags around their bodies and everything else in the world. Streets crowded, and your taxes had to go all the way around this stuff, but they weren't violent. It was kind of like having fun at a big, huge party that last day. The first part of, when we first got there in Barcelona, that wasn't that way. The indubitistas, we were going from one place to the other, and found out there was a, I call it demonstration, but the police trying to get in to get the ballots, taking the people out. You know what I mean? And it wasn't, not, non-confrontational. So, we decided not to go that way, my guess did, and we went and saw something else. Anyway, that, when we talk about our Spanish architecture here, no, this is Mediterranean. I got to tell you, every place you go in Spain is, looks like Camrio, as far as roofs and things are concerned, the way we want it to be. and things are concerned, the way we want it to be. And I just saw so much. I could go all night long with Naples, Rome, La Verna. Florence was my favorite city. Okay? That was beautiful. Anyway, I didn't do much because we just got back and I had to do a couple of things, and that's it. So I, I'm back. I went to APCB meeting, sorry, over in Ventura, and that was it. That was yesterday. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you all. I have a few things tonight. I'll run down the meetings very quickly. I had quite a few on this list tonight. For some reason, I've got VCOG a lot. VCOG, a regular meeting, and I want to talk about our issue in just a moment that we discussed. Our admin committee met twice, VCTC last Friday, and we talked about, bye, several funding opportunities, and one of the things that I've, I put them on notice, that every time we see anything that could possibly be used to help us find solutions for the 101 freeway, we're going to mention it and we're going to apply for it. So if it's just a temporary or a partial fix, anything's going to help. So that was a lot of what we talked about there. And I did attend the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District's community forum, and it had a good group. People come with their own agendas, just as they did last night at our economic development committee, community meeting, which I attended, and they, again, come with their own agendas. And I think that's one of the things that makes it very difficult in this kind of process is to really gauge what the whole community wants and not just, you know, these people who sometimes are willing to take the time and come out. So, and it's hard particularly, and it's hard for them, I think, sometimes because the public doesn't have all of the background information sometimes in order to really formulate what their good ideas might be. So I think we need to do more educating in order to tell people what, how things are today. If you don't know what today is, how do you know where you're going to go tomorrow? You got to have some place to start, and you could see that was lacking in some of the comments. So I think that's a task that we have to undertake. I want to go back to our VCOG meeting last, we could go Thursday, I believe. We had a representative from SCAG who came up and, I guess it was two weeks ago, and talked about the new rena process, arena process, however you want to pronounce it, that will begin the next cycle. It seems like we just did it, but we're ready to start the next one. Gave a great presentation on what it is, how they went, and I'll make sure you all get a copy. This was her PowerPoint and her speech on it, and talked about how they make the decision on how to allocate it and the whole process. This was the process from the fifth cycle, and they will use the same process, at least they believe, for the next cycle. But one thing I want to bring up, and this is, I'm going to ask for a study session on this sooner than later. You know how we always wondered how Thousand Oaks got such a low number?
Yes.
And we all got such a high number? I finally understand it. And they, and when I asked the question, they agreed. What happens in this process is they go out to the city, they being SCAG, and ask for what can you do? Well, we merrily said, we can do so many. Thousand Oaks said, oh, this is all we can do. Well, they take that number, and from there, that's where they, they really stay pretty true to what the cities are telling them they can accommodate, as long as they can move it around within the, you know, your region. So I would like to have a study session with the council and with staff where we talk about where we're going in the future and what can we really accommodate in this next cycle. If you look around what's occurred in the county in the last cycle, we've done more than our fair share. We have really built a lot compared to other cities.
And that's what Thousand Oaks said last time. They said they did more, and now they couldn't do anymore.
Right. So maybe it's our turn that we say, okay, we took, we took a lot of it last time. Now this time, we need to catch up with ourselves and catch our breath. But I think that's a decision that I think the council should be involved in and not just put that burden on staff to make that. So, and because if they give the wrong number, then all we do is complain for the next nine years. So it's something I think would be helpful for everybody. But it will, they said they will be starting that shortly if they haven't already contacted the cities as they work their way to getting ready to the next cycle. So I would appreciate if we put that on the agenda and we have a good, healthy discussion about it. And I realize it may take a little bit of staff work to begin to come up with some proposals, but I think the council should be involved in that decision. Let's see. I've got quite a few tonight. I want to mention one event that I went to that I always enjoy the year that I'm mayor. I think it's, and you probably all do, the year you get to do it as mayor, is the Military Appreciation Night that they have, and it's just such a, such an honor to see these individuals and to recognize them for their wonderful work and service to our country. And one of the gentlemen had just received a Purple Heart, and so it, it's just amazing. And they are very, you know, it's just like, it's just what they do. It's just what they do, and they appreciate being recognized, but they're very humble at the same time. So it's always a great one. So I did do that. Let's see. Mr. Tremblay mentioned our meeting with Camrosa. I was there on that one. Economic Development Meeting, that was Mr. Kilde and I. We did that one. And Liaison Committee, that was Camrosa. We have another one coming up with Pleasant Valley School District, I believe is our next one. Is that correct? If I'm not mistaken.
But I don't think we have a date.
No, we're trying to schedule that.
I think it's in November now instead of October.
It depends on council schedules, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Well, we're working on it. And my, well, I have two, but my last one that I want to ask council's informal opinion on. You've probably all heard that Amazon is looking for a new headquarters, and they're saying to cities, send us a proposal. Well, I received today a letter from the city of Oxnard asking the city of Camrio to write a letter supporting them as one of the nominations or whatever, however you want to put it, for Amazon to come to Oxnard. And in that letter, they talk about how it would be regional and helping the region, and I was a little hesitant to say, sure, they need it sooner than later. We really don't have to put it, time to put it on the agenda. So as far as the city attorney will let me go in that informal, I guess if anybody has a heartache over it, or is there any problem with just saying, fine, we support it? If you ask my personal opinion, and if I were Amazon, I'd want my second headquarters to be not on the West Coast. I would think they would want to go Midwest, or, but that's up to them, because, you know, they're in Seattle, so. Anyway, what can I do, Mr. City Attorney, with this?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay. Is it okay for me, on behalf of the city of Camrio, to write a, to write a letter, or just basically fill out their form letter, that will be presented to Amazon in support of Oxnard's application?
Do we have a policy on council members writing letters?
They're asking it from the mayor on behalf of the city, so not personally.
Right. I know that you can write one individually, but I think if it's going to be collectively on behalf of the council, then you'd probably need to have it on the agenda because otherwise, you know, you're getting a collective concurrence of the council on an item that's not on the agenda. But when is their application? Could we put this on the 25th?
Bring my phone out. I just got it on my phone today.
Maybe they should have notified you earlier.
That's probably true.
The letter is requested before the next council meeting. I think it's as early as next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Something like that. I think it was next week.
So to go back to my question, do we have a policy on council members or the mayor writing letters? And if so, what does it say?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
And I know the circumstances under which we developed it.
Yeah, perhaps during the six o'clock session. I can check that policy and get back to you. My memory of it is that you would be able to write the letter indicating your support, but you wouldn't, you would need to clarify that you were not, you know, speaking on behalf of the entire council.
Or the city.
Well, she'd be speaking on behalf of herself. She could say.
And that's not what I'm proposing. I just need to know what to tell Mayor Flynn.
I understand.
So, because we don't meet again. So that's why I'm bringing it up, and if the city attorney wants to give us guidance one way or another, that will be my answer to Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, well, I can tell you this. I'll check the policy during the six o'clock session and let you know.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. I have so many little notes here. I apologize for being unorganized. I think that is all of them, other than to thank our staff for the hard work they do. Whenever we have a wind, whenever we have a major rainstorm, it's public work, so they're out there cleaning up the city. And this isn't the first time, and it won't be the last, but we really do appreciate their hard work because that's one of the things the city is known for, is what it looks like and how well it's kept up. And so my last thing is, and it's going back to tragedies and things that have happened recently, and it goes to the tragedy in Las Vegas. And the, I know that I've experienced this, and you probably all have, the more you talk to people about it, the more you hear about people who were there, you know, that this person was there, this person's daughter, this person's niece, or, we actually had someone in our office who was there, fortunately, was able to get out and survive. Of all of the people who were tragically killed that day, we had one person who resides in Camrio. And so I, tonight, I would like to, I would like to adjourn in the memory of all that were, that were killed and all that were hurt, and also in tribute to the first responders. And as we learned that day, it isn't just the police and fire, it's everybody there taking care of each other. So the citizens in that group became first responders because they, they were helping each other. So I would ask that we send something in particular to the, to the mother of the, of the man that was, that was killed, but also to note that we will do this in memory of everyone.
Your Honor, the gentleman that was killed, I barely got to read the part of that article of all 12 pages of the, I mean, papers, and it said that he was a hero. Now, I didn't get to read the rest of the article. What did he do to become a hero?
Jumped on top of the person next to him.
Okay, then we should be giving him recognition.
I'll read that if he, and this, it's even more touching because he was shot that day and unfortunately died later, and his name was Chris Hazelcombe.
Hazelcombe, right.
And he, he's listed as number 44 in the article from Camrio, California, and I'm just going to read this, and it just brings tears to your eyes. Says, "As the clock approached 11:00 a.m. on Monday morning, Mary Ann Hazelcombe stood in a Las Vegas, I can't even talk, Las Vegas hospital room and gave the order to disconnect the ventilator that was keeping her son alive. Chris Hazelcombe had shielded his best friend's wife after the shooting started. He was a graduate of Thousand Oaks High School. He became the 58th victim in the shooting, but after graduation from high school, he moved to Camrio. And his mother said of him that he's the kind that would go out on a limb for everyone." So he put himself in danger to protect, to protect his best friend's wife, who survived.
I think he should be given, in our night closing tonight, him in particular.
That's what I asked.
All those others additionally, but him in particular.
That's it. That's what I asked for, and I think it's just, it breaks your heart. I don't think we'll ever understand it.
But would, he worked at the neighborhood mall store over there. Kind of a management position, but he was, I didn't know him. I saw him a few times, so, but very, you could tell he was a very hands-on, very people-oriented person.
Very nice person, yeah. Such a tragedy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There is nothing else. I will let the city attorney announce our various closed session items.
Yes, we have three closed session items. One is a conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the Stock Building Supply Property at 2800 Berry Street. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. Under negotiation, our price and terms of payment. Our second closed session will be public employee performance evaluations. The authority is Government Code Section 54957. This will be for the city manager and city attorney. And the third item is a conference with labor negotiators. Authority is Government Code Section 54957.6. The designated representatives for the city are the city attorney, and the unrepresented employee is the city manager.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will recess to our study session, which tonight we have two topics, water and sewer rates, and the public noticing procedures for land use and capital improvement projects. If we have time, we will take care of some of the closed session items, and then we'll be back at 7:30. We do not have any items on the agenda at 7:30, but we will take public comment. With that, we are recessed. I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council back to order and let the record reflect that all council members are present. We've just come from a study session with no action to report. Did the roll call, how that flag slipped? Mr. Kilde, would you need assistance?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Do we have any amendments to the evening's agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Just have to ask, the next item on the agenda would be public comments. I do only have one speaker sheet, and that is Matt Lormer.
Well, that was quick, huh? Did you guys miss me? I was only gone for a couple of weeks, but. I've been a resident of Camrio for 20 years. It's a really great community. Met a lot of great people. I know I've been here a lot over the past. You know, I believe that if you have issues, you should bring them to the city. I come here over the years to basically talk about the issues that are important, and it's never been personal about you gentlemen or ladies. It's always been about the community, making it better. If you have that opportunity, you should speak up. Behind you is the flag, the United States of America, and I'm kind of glad that people should stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag. No matter what you believe or don't believe, at least you can do that, pay honor to the people who've given their lives over a century, the troops, different people who've given their lives in this country, so it's important to always be respectful of that. That being said, I'd like to comment a couple of things. I want to thank the city council for taking care of Dizor Park. I brought that issue up because the people who are surrounding that park gave their voice to me that there's some things that need to be fixed. I appreciate the new benches, everything that's been done over there. So again, thank you for taking care of that. I appreciate it. The next thing I want to talk about is the senior center. I'm told over 3,000 surveys are going to be sent out throughout the city. I encourage people at home, I hope the city council encourage people to really fill that out. You know, one of the things that have been important to me in this community is the senior center. And why? When I ran for city council the first time, I saw a woman who almost fell because the bathroom isn't wide enough for handicap accessibility. That's one reason why it needs to be replaced. The lighting is difficult for people to see stuff when they play bingo. And basically, Camrio is a great place to live. Let's make the senior center bigger and better for the people. Let's be the outstanding senior center of the community. I also want to make a passionate plea to the city council. I hope you approve the new senior center in the future, but I also would like to see fundraising. I'd like to see you as a city council, each and every one of you, and the park board, move forward. I'd be happy to come back to town, and let's do a fundraiser and raise some money also for new furniture and things for that senior center. Our community matters. And you know something? Even though I'm in Texas, my love for the people here and for everything in this community is still important, and I'll always have a voice. And again, it's always been about making things better for the people in this community. I care about the people. They've been my neighbors, there've been people down at city hall, there've been people at the cafe, in the store, and I have a lot of people who email me and call me, and I want to thank them because I do love you and I love your community, and I do care, and I've always thought about coming to this city council and other places about just making improvements. It's never been about personal beefs between people. It's just about making life better. So I just want to say those few words, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Matt, and we certainly wish you the best in your new adventure in life and wish your family well as well. So when you come back and see us with that Texas draw, we'll, we'll know you're having a good time in Texas.
If I could just add one, one item, and that is
If I could just add one, one item, and that is, Matt, I had the opportunity and privilege to meet you during the campaign last year and get to know you. And I want you to know that I appreciate very much your passion for the community. That's what it's all about, and your tenacity in presenting issues. And it's obvious that you care for this community deeply. So I want to wish you the best down in Texas, and coming, coming back to visit from time to time. So thank you.
Your mother's still here in Thousand Oaks, correct?
Yeah, my mom.
Or not here. Well, good. So you've got, still got family here, then.
One thing. Matt, I'm a Texas, like I told you, but Arkansas is real close to both the convergence of the Mississippi River and the Red River.
Yep.
Which do you live closest to?
It's kind of the, the upper side, basically. The river goes down, I'm kind of on the taller part.
So you're closer to the Red River than Mississippi?
Yeah.
Yep.
The Red River, the Red River Army Depot, yeah.
Okay, I know where you are.
Great. Well, again, we wish you, certainly wish you the best, and thank you for all your, your help and concern with, for the city over the years. So we wish you best, the best. I do have one more speaker sheet. It is Marylin Mott. If I'm saying your first name right. Marylin Mott. And if you could give your name for the record, you need to pull that down. Matt's a lot taller than you. There you go.
Okay. My name is Marylin Mott, and I have the senior crackly, so, I'm sorry, I'm speaking through a crackly voice. I wanted to address the fact that other cities in Ventura County have meal programs for their seniors. This is a fantastic meal program that Simi Valley has. Moore Park has a nutritionist that cooks meals for their seniors. Thousand Oaks has a tremendous meal program for their seniors also. I used to live in Monterey. Monterey had a fantastic meal program for their seniors, and the neighboring city of Pacific Grove did also. And the seniors could go between those two cities and have parties, you know, have meals every day. At Moore Park, they have once a month birthday party for all the seniors who are born that month. And they not only have the meal, which the seniors can either purchase, or if they don't have the money, the meal is actually provided for them. And after their birthday celebration, they actually, Moore Park actually pays for entertainers to be there to entertain them on their birthday. And also, then they're given, like, cakes and pies that have been donated by Vons or other stores. So I'm asking the city, because you guys are very well off financially compared to many cities in the United States. And it appears that you are only, you are one of the few cities with huge revenue that is not supporting your seniors. And if you looked, if you would even drive out to Simi Valley and go into their building, you would see they have a really large cooking area, and also they have large rooms for all kinds of facilities. So it's not mainly just about providing meals for seniors, but it's also, okay.
Keep going. No, you've got another minute.
Oh, I got a minute. Okay. So it's just also, you know, including your seniors as viable people, because you guys don't look like clones to me. You don't look like androids. And you must have sometime had a mother or a grandmother that needed to have an outreach, you know, a social life. And part of that social life would be providing a nice building with handicapped accessible bathrooms and a nice foyer like the Simi Valley Senior Center has, where they can just come and chat if they don't want to do activities. So I feel that for all the money that Camrio has, you guys have been so negligent to your seniors.
Well, thank you very much.
Despicable, actually.
Oh, thank you. I, I hope you know that we are in the process of doing a, a study of our community on exactly what the park, because it is under the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District. It doesn't fall under the city, and that is a separate district. But together, the city and that district is doing a, a need study, where we're looking at what the needs are in the community. So I hope you get involved in that. There's public outreach.
I have been involved.
Good.
And that's why I decided to come here to speak tonight. And you are the only city that I know of that has their senior center. Well, I guess I can't say that because Simi's combined, but many cities just have support from the city itself. And yet, from what I understand, you guys have been spending pennies, maybe not even anything, for your seniors.
Well, we do have our senior, we do pay for the senior nutrition program, so we do.
Yes, we do.
We do something. But we're working.
But I haven't seen any meals at the senior centers.
Well, that's a whole other program. And we have your address. We can send you some information on the senior nutrition.
Well, if it goes to the healthcare district, not everyone is.
No, it's not.
No.
Not to healthcare.
But we'll, we'll send you some information on it. And, but please, get involved, be part of the, the study, and let's figure out what we can do to accommodate the seniors and give them a good spot. I will tell you this.
Well, I would hope the city would start including the seniors, because they are viable people.
Do you realize some of us are seniors?
All of us.
I've never seen you at the senior center.
You have.
Well, you don't have to go to the senior center to be a senior.
We don't want to argue with you, but, but please, get involved. We're in the process of doing a needs assessment, and then we will be together, we'll figure out what we can do best for this community, because.
Well, I would hope you would also encourage, you know, and have transparency, that when your report comes back from your survey organization, that that's transparent, and everyone in the city can, can learn about it, and that you encourage everyone in the city to return those ballots or surveys, because I've heard that they get a very low turnout usually when they get.
Well, it's, it's up to everyone. There'll be mails out. They'll be on our website. You can go right now to the City of Camrio's website and, and take the survey and give your opinion. So everyone has the opportunity in the community to be a part of it. So thanks for coming, and I expect to see you at our next forum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anything else before us tonight?
I have.
The one thing I forgot to mention, and three of us got to go today as we watched the tent rise on the Cavalier, extravaganza, I don't know what the best word to describe this is.
Performance.
But anyone who's been driving along the 101 freeway can see the tents begin to rise, which will be, I don't know who best to describe it. Mr. Fox, Mr. Norman, who wants to give the best shot to describe what it is?
Cavalier. Cavalier Adaseo is a, is a equestrian show, multimedia in nature. It is held under the world's largest tent, and, and it is the world's largest traveling show. It is an ode to the special nature between man and horse. And, and people who have seen it have described it as just an incredible performance and experience.
Absolutely. They have 65 horses that will be coming to town. I can't remember. I'm only impressed by the horses, I guess. I can't remember how many performers, but the man, imagine 65 horses. The tent, they said today, will be, it's as large as a football field.
Tell them about the water being reused, too.
And, and any water they use is recycled in the, in the program. So it is, it will be here, they will be here, November through the first part of January.
February 11th.
Through the end. Mr. Baca, do you have anything to add? Because, that's true, your department processed all this.
Just, we're very excited to have this experience for the residents of Camrio and our community and our region. And we think that this is going to be a great experience for the City of Camrio and for our businesses in town. And we're very happy to have Cavalier Adaseo performance here in Camrio.
They are hiring people. They have the, the workers who travel with them, but they hire local to help with parking, ticket takers, some of the, the workers, so that, that does hire, you know, locals. Obviously, they buy products locally. They stay in the hotels, so it really does infuse the, the economy, not just the City of Camrio, but out to all our businesses as well. So it is exciting. They can buy their tickets online, I believe?
Yes, they can, at cavalier.com.
Cavalier.com. And so, going online, buy your tickets, and then they will be with us for just about two and a half months? Is that what it was?
Yes, so mid-November, November 11th, through the holidays, ending the first week in January, with the potential for an extra week or so.
Perfect. Anyone else? Mr. Kildy, huh?
A couple of things. First, I need to adjourn the Cam San District meeting. And second, we lost a, an important person in our community on Saturday night. Michael Ann Rockenstein died, and she's Paul.
Oh, my goodness. I did not know that.
Wife. And she was a big supporter of the city here. And we had a lot of really good conversations over the years, and how proud she was, even though they didn't quite live in the city.
That's right.
Boundaries, but they were like really, really close. And they always wanted to see if they'd get annexed. And they were just, it was like, what, a couple of houses, really close. But they really kept up on city issues, and are really a big part of the fabric of our community. So with your permission, I'd like to, as well, you know, adjourn in her memory as well.
When they did live in the city, they lived next door to me.
That's right. They did live. That's right. Absolutely.
Well, we will certainly add that to those that we are already, again, closing in the, the memory of those who suffered at the hands of, I don't know, I don't even know how to describe them in Las Vegas. We will add her to the list. So with that, we are finished with our agenda. We do have some closed session items. Would you just like to remind people where we're, we're headed, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure, I can do the shorthand version on that. We've got one, which is a conference with real property negotiator. That's for the stock building property on 2800 Berry Street. We have a public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney and city manager. And then there's also the conference with labor negotiators for the city manager.
Thank you very much. So that, saying that, we are recessed.